We add one item to the agenda. And it's with the financial report, so it would go under the consent agenda. And it's an invoice to be paid. And this was for cleaning that occurred over the weekend at the health department and the registrar's office.
Cleaning invoice?
Yes, sir.
Any other items that you had?
No.
In the board number? All right, moving on. Next is our... Ma'am?
I'm Dr. Jacob. The doctor.
I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
That's settled?
Yes.
On the table please, two five, saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is our citizen public comment period. This time provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. Ms. Velk. Has no one signed up? Is there anyone here that would like to address the board even though you did not sign up? Okay. At this time, the board supervisors of Almanas County approved a resolution on May 21st, 2018, honoring Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. Recognizing his 36 years of outstanding service in defense of the United States of America, being a positive role model and hometown hero to the Almanas County. Major General Dice retired in 2018 and is visiting the Almanac community, at which time staff requested he attend a board meeting to personally receive the resolution. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dice, do you mind stepping forward, sir? Sorry, General Dice. It's okay if you stand up here, Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
So, Mr. Dice, I asked the chairman and I asked this board for the resolution upon your retirement. And I was honored to have the opportunity to ask for this resolution because I got to know your father. Your father was an instrumental man in the time that I moved to Almanacs. He was at the church that I joined, the Heathrow Baptist Church. And there was nothing like the smile of Monroe Dice, who made me feel comfortable, not only at church, but in this community that I now call home. And I have most fond memories of him always giving my children every Sunday a quarter. And he always had the biggest handshake that I have ever shook in my life. So, through a new change in life and getting married and moving to a new town, I'm just honored to have this opportunity to share this with you and ultimately to remember the wonderful man that your father was and your sister and the impact that you've had to all of Almanacs County locally and to our nation. So, I'm proud to read you this resolution from the Almanacs County Board of Supervisors. And this resolution is in honor of Major General Robert M. Dice Jr., USA, retiring. Whereas Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. is a native of Almanacs County and a 1978 graduate of Almanacs County Hospital. And whereas Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. graduated from the United States Military Academy at West Point in New York in 1982 and was commissioned as an infantry officer in the United States Army. And whereas Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. has held numerous command and staff assignments, including platoon leader, battalion adjutant, rifle company commander, headquarters company commander, battalion operations officer, deputy division G3 and brigade executive officer during assignments in the 82nd Airborne Division at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, the 3rd Infantry Division in both Germany at Fort Stewart, Georgia, and in the 8th U.S. Army Korea. And whereas Major General Robert Dice Jr. served as a tactical officer in the United States Army School of the Americas in Panama, participated in combat operations during Operation Urgent Fury in Grenada, and served as a force integration officer in the Office of Deputy Chief of Staff for Operations and Plans in the Pentagon. Whereas Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. served from 2000 to 2008 as a force integration officer and force management officer with the 1st Army at Fort Gillon, Georgia, and later as Director of Force Integration Deputy Chief of Staff, G3, 5, and 7 in the United States Army Forces Command at Fort McPherson, Georgia. Whereas Major Robert M. Dice Jr. served from June 2008 to 2009 as the Division Chief of Force Integration, combined Security Assistance Command Afghanistan as part of the operation During Freedom in Afghanistan. Whereas Major Robert M. Dice Jr. upon his redeployment from Afghanistan was assigned to headquarters where he served as Director of Requirements and Integration, Army Capabilities Integration Center from August 2009 to May 2012, followed by service as Director of Force Development Office of the U.S. Army Deputy Chief of Staff from June 2012 to June 2015. Whereas Major Robert M. Dice Jr. assumed duties as the Deputy Director of Army Capabilities and Integration Center on July 6, 2015. Whereas Major General Robert M. Dice Jr. will conclude a 36-year service career on October 1, 2018, with his retirement from the United States Army, a career recognized by numerous military decorations, including the Distinguished Service Medal, Legion of Merit, the Bronze Star, and the French National Order of Merit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Almanacs County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize Major Robert M. Dice Jr. for his many years of outstanding service of the defense of the United States of America and for being a positive role model and hometown hero to the county of the Almanacs community.
Altered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I say?
Please.
Sure. I very much appreciate this recognition from this esteemed body. And I've given many speeches in my life, starting with the ninth grade 4-H Club here in Almanacs County. But I will say this, that never pass up the opportunity to recognize your spouse early in your speech. As I recognize Sharon and my sister Mary, my loved ones that are here tonight, because if you get through your speech and you forget them, then you're going to pay for it later on. I'm telling this just in case. I also recognize liked ones, that's Darrell Pocket sitting on the front row, one of my high school classmates that's here, who is here tonight. I've been to many places around the world, lived in, I think, four countries. I've forgotten all the countries that I've visited. I've swum in the, above the Arctic Circle and the Barents Sea. I've been in Panama, I've been in South America, I've been in Asia, in Australia, haven't been to Antarctica yet. My roots run deep and they run right here to Almanacs and I always appreciate coming back here. And I just want to say what a national treasure, not only the national park that you have close by, and when you're local and living next to it, you probably don't give it as much credit. But people from all over the world come here and I've met them in the Army, that they've been to my hometown, when they are from Australia or from Germany or from Japan, they know where my hometown is. And of course, being in the military from West Point, they, we study history, military history, to include Civil War history. So, they know where my hometown is. So, I always, I always feel good coming back here and very much appreciate this award and this resolution. And I'm now in a second career, living in Northern Virginia. And with your permission, if it's okay, if I can head back there tonight, because I've got to go to work tomorrow.
We hate to see you go, but understand.
So, very much appreciate what you do, because in my 36 years in the Army, most hard problems are solved by leadership. And your leadership as newly elected here in the county of Almanacs, so appreciate your willingness to serve and looking out for the future of both the people of Almanacs and also the county of Almanacs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have on the agenda Kristi Horsley from CASA. Ms. Horsley, it's requested to appeal for the board supervisors to provide an update on the court appointment special after proven in Almanacs. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. As a few of you gentlemen, I've provided you something that you can follow along with, but I try to make it clear, because I prefer to talk to people that I'm talking to rather than just reading. So, first, I am Kristi Horsley, and I am the current Advocate Manager for the CASA program in Almanacs. And CASA of Central Virginia, the long title stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. And what that means, the heart of the CASA program is the CASA volunteer. Essentially, what a CASA volunteer does is plug into a case of child abuse or neglect that is moving through the J and D court system, and we're basically an extra set of eyes and ears to advocate for the child's best interest. And the way that I explain that to children, to families, is our job is to be a sponge and soak up everything there is to know about that child and to give that information back to the judge in the form of a court report. Because as Judge Duncan said, a cake is only as good as the ingredients in it. And if you think about it, in custody situations, in foster care cases, in cases where parental rights might be terminated, the person in the room that knows the least about the case, the least about the children, the least about the dynamics in providing that case, is the judge. And he or she is the one who has to make the highest stakes critical decisions in foster care cases and other similar high stakes cases. So, we want to provide the judge with as much information as possible. And we also know that we would not be here in Almanacs County without the support of our judge and also the board of supervisors, because we do serve at the pleasure of the court and for their benefit. So, just a little bit of background about CASA before we dig into the specific information and the stats about the Almanacs program. So, CASA as a national program has existed since about 1977. A judge in Seattle, Washington founded the program when he said, "I just don't have enough information to make these kinds of case decisions." So, he founded the program where volunteers would actually plug into cases. I started out as a CASA volunteer myself. I did that for a year and a half before I came on staff with the CASA program. And initially, when I was a CASA volunteer, I thought, "I don't know if I'm actually needed. There's already an attorney for the child, there's already a social worker, is another person just leveling it up?" But I can tell you, when you have a vulnerable child looking for a system, one thing that I have learned from certain, it is never a bad thing to have an extra set of eyes and ears to advocate for that child, because again, they are in a very vulnerable position. There are 27 CASA programs in the state of Virginia. CASA of Central Virginia specifically was founded in 1989. We serve Lynchburg City, Amherst, Nelson, Bedford, and Campbell Counties, and now Almanacs. We are actually the third largest program in the state of Virginia behind Fairfax and Richmond City. And that's both geographical area that we cover, but also number of children that we serve in a year. The Code of Virginia outlines the duties that a CASA can fulfill, and the Department of Criminal Justice in Richmond provides oversight. So, for example, a CASA has to visit their child in their placement, wherever they're living, at least one time per month. That is a safety check for that child, so that we can report on that child in that placement. CASA volunteers have strict standards, so for example, they are only supposed to serve two cases at a time, so there's lots of individual attention. And the CASA volunteer becomes basically an expert on that child. So, I'm proud to say we have many fine, upstanding citizens that become CASA volunteers, their backgrounds are diverse. We have a minister, we have retired psychologists, we have teachers, nurses, but we don't come with any special expertise that we claim to the case. We come to the case as an expert on that child and what that child wants to see happen, what would be in their best interest. As an Advocate Manager, what I do, I'm the first point of contact between the court and the volunteer. The court will send us cases that they want CASA to be appointed to. I will pick a volunteer whose strengths will fit that case and I support the volunteer at court. The volunteer also submits a court report. I review that report, ensure it meets the needs of the decision-making that will go on at that hearing, and submit it to the court. So, for the information specific to Almanacs, so CASA in Almanacs has existed since April 2018. That is when we graduated our first CASA volunteers and started serving cases. I took on the program about summer of 2018. So, since April of 2018, we've had 42 children in total refer to us. And I'm very pleased to say that we have been able to serve 31 of those children, which is a high percentage. Currently, we are right now at this moment serving 18 children. We have seven children on our waiting list, which I'm hoping to whittle that number down, because ultimately, we would like to be able to serve every single child that is appointed to us, because that's, that's a child in a family that the judge considers important enough that needs some additional eyes and ears. So, of the children that have been referred to us, 20 of those have been in foster care in the custody of DSS, and 22 have been within the circle of family, so either they've been in their own home or in the custody of a relative. So, we have served about three types of cases here in Almanacs. One type, of course, is foster care cases, where the situation was so grave and the danger was so imminent that the child had to come out of the home immediately. We've also had three children that there's been a protective order that DSS has brought, so there's been a concern that brought them to the attention of social services or the court. But we can maybe fix it if we wrap around that family and provide some support, some monitoring. And then the remaining number of cases, 19 children, those are CHINs cases. What that stands for is a child in need of services or a child in need of supervision. The main difference between that and abuse neglect case, usually abuse neglect cases are because of the adult's fault or something they're not doing or something they are doing that they shouldn't be. CHINs cases are where the child is maybe having some behaviors, a lot of the CHINs are truancy related, where the child isn't getting to school. We have found some of the CHINs cases, some of the most exciting opportunities, because that really provides an opportunity to get in there, build a relationship with a family and a child, and let stabilize the situation before we have to take the steps of removing the child or breaking up a family, right? So, those are very exciting opportunities. We currently have seven volunteers who are serving Almanacs cases. And again, they're getting a lot done. Seven volunteers are serving 18 children. And again, we have a wide variety, school teacher, minister, people who are working part-time, people who have retired and moved here to Almanacs. And I will say, so some of the things that have been a pleasure in working here in Almanacs or that have contributed to the success we have had so far, and I will say, I, we have had some great successes here in Almanacs. So, definitely, we have a warm working relationship with the court's office. We depend on them to get our cases. We certainly do have the support of our judge, and he is, I believe, grateful for the additional information that we are able to provide and the way that enhances his decision-making. We've been welcomed by the legal community. Our volunteers are building very positive working relationships on the ground with schools, with the teachers, with social workers, with counselors. Our FAT and Community Services Office is a treasure, and you guys are lucky to have Ashley Sandman and the wonderful things that she's doing for the community and making that a point to welcome families in and get them help they need. And then, so some of the success stories, what that has looked like. So, one example, there was a case where there was a large sibling group that was removed. They were brought into the custody of DSS. And then, in part, due to CASA's advocacy, those children were returned to the home. And that CASA volunteer was instrumental in monitoring, faithfully monitoring that case, ensuring that they got the services they needed and had a better outcome, with better dynamics near the end. We had another case where the children were on track to return home and they were in a trial home placement. The CASA volunteer was instrumental to looping in the father, who was still incarcerated, to looping him in so that he could be a part of case meetings during the case, and also was instrumental to getting him some counseling services that he could engage in before he left jail. And the reason that was positive is because that father eventually returned to that home, and he could have potentially stabilized the whole dynamic and safety of the home if he wasn't functioning well. So, that was extremely positive. And I will say also, you might tend to think that for the families or the children, that perhaps they might resent CASA or if we're participating in holding them accountable. But the fact is, in pretty much every case, we've been able to assign a CASA in Almanacs, the family and the child have been very grateful. They have felt well supported. It's humanized the system a little bit more for them, made it a little bit more personal. And again, we've also been able to provide more information at other decision-making points, like at FAT, or helping other providers in the case communicate. So, for example, if the Commonwealth's Attorney is prosecuting the case, what are we doing to help make sure that child victim gets the support they need along the way, so that prosecuting the case isn't going to contribute to their mental health decline or something like that? So, our goals moving forward, one is to serve every single child that the judge sees fit to send to us. We absolutely want to make sure that every child gets the support they need. We also want to partner with our agencies to ensure that children and families at risk are able to be stabilized in the home without having to resort to sending the child to detention to get results, without having to remove the child from the home. Because it makes a lot more sense to practice your parenting skills when you've got that child with you 24/7, and you can get some good counseling support or parenting coach in there. We also want to continue to strengthen our partnerships with community agencies like social services, court services unit, CSA office, schools, court, to maximize the positive results that can be taken in cases. We also want to educate stakeholders in the community about trauma, the way that this can drive some of the negative behaviors for families and children, and again, stabilize that before it reaches crisis point. And last, we want to gain more volunteers so that we can serve every child that comes before us. So, at this point, do you all have any questions that I can answer?
Hello, is open. Questions?
How many have missed it? How many volunteers do you have?
Currently, we have seven that are serving Almanacs cases. I would say we maybe have three or four that are dedicated Almanacs volunteers, but we have a total of seven right now that are serving Almanacs cases.
Now, let's see. What's the advocate do if one has to travel, if we will, to be involved?
Great question. So, it is an involved process, because we want to make sure that people who are involved in these children's lives are only going to help. So, first is to attend an information session. It's about one hour where we provide people who are interested in information, so that they can determine, well, I have enough time in my life to be able to serve well, to fulfill the role. After the information session, they would fill out a paper application and also have some sort of autobiography about one page long. And they also do a tech assessment where they determine if they're able to meet our technology requirements. And then, once they turn that in, we would do a telephone interview with them, where we assess for some of the characteristics that we're looking for. If they successfully go through that, then we would have them do a two-hour in-person interview. And then, once they successfully make it through the in-person interview, they would do six to seven weeks of in-person training. And it's one night a week for about three hours each week. And during that time, they also do two court observations and they do a practice court report. So, it is a very involved process, and we do that on purpose.
Sounds like it.
Yes, sir. We tell people it's the hardest job that they'll, it's the hardest they'll ever work to volunteer.
Well, thank you, Ms. Horsley. Thank you for coming by and engaging us in you all's activities.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
We can jump over here to action items for public hearings. Let's jump over to a resolution for a personal property tax relief program. In accordance with requirements set forth in Code of Virginia for the Personal Property Tax Relief Program, qualifying vehicles situated within the county commence in January 12 of January 2012 shall receive personal property tax relief. The 2019 PPTRA rate is 29.7% for personal used vehicle value at $1,001 to $20,000. Now, recommendation staff is for the Commissioner of Revenue request, considered options under 2019 Personal Property Tax Relief program resolution. The floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ho. Mr. Bill.
You can ask it before I first. My only curiosity in this was maybe if Mrs. Adams could provide me some education on this. Since we continue to have level funding, but we changed the way in which we assess vehicles, is passing this the way we previously did it before going to keep the same amount of people getting tax relief? Or now that we're valuing the vehicle at 100%, are we going to take some of those folks out of personal property tax relief with a limit due to $20,000?
No. That doesn't change, because when we were doing it at 50%, then the resolution had to do really 50% when she was using those values. But she had to look at the total values when she did the relief, when she applied them. So, that hasn't changed as far as that.
I apologize. When you said, so when we were at 50%, she was using this at 100%?
Exactly. She would look at the total value of what the vehicle would be valued at at 100%.
To qualify for personal property, for personal property tax relief.
And that's an amount that the state sets annually that comes to the locality, and that amount has not changed regardless of the percentage of value or any of that information. They send an amount every year. They've sent the same amount since, well, since I've been here. It's been the same budget amount. So, it, it doesn't change the formula. That's why you have to adopt it annually, because when the values change, the percentage of the relief changes, the overall percentage of the relief. So, it's derived to that same number.
Okay.
It's 24, 240, I can rub a new number in.
Well, the percentage didn't really make that much of a difference to me, really. I just wanted to make sure that we wouldn't have citizens that were surprised that they previously had tax relief from the same vehicle we are and don't, because of the way we assess vehicles.
And what changed on the vehicle is the values, because it's changed the clean, I think the Commissioner of Revenue determine the value would be clean trade-in value, where it was a different type of value prior to the assessment change. So, their, their vehicle may have qualified before, and it doesn't qualify vice versa, depending on what that value was at the time.
Mr. Ho.
As I recall from previous years, when the Commissioner of Revenue came, she explained it that, like Mrs. Adams says, a set pool of money the state sends as for personal property tax relief, there's a formula she has to plug in, how many cars we have registered in the county, what those values are, and all of that spits out this number, and that's what she's got to go by. It's just that we have to go through this process every year to formalize it. It has nothing to do with how we assess vehicles or tax on, this is the formula from the state on how much of the government yield more property tax relief that they're going to get. So, we got X number of dollars. If we had more cars, then the percentage is lower, because we still only have that total of dollars. If you have less cars, the percentage goes up. So, that's the way it was explained to us before.
I understood that part. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a whole bunch of people surprised that they did get it previously and because of the way the assessment changed, they weren't getting it this year.
And that total amount is $1,023,636.
In the personal property tax.
Thank you. Any other questions? This motion?
Make a motion, we approve the 2019 Personal Property Tax Relief Resolution with 29.7%.
That's settled?
Settled.
Discussion? Have a roll call vote, Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Ho?
Aye.
Mr. Bill?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And that's now the going to our series of public hearings. Public hearing number one, that we're going to address is a joint public hearing with VDOT Secondary Six-Year Road Plan. After being duly advertised, a joint public hearing with VDOT is being held to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2025, and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2025. 2025, and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 for Appomattox County. During this time, Appomattox County residents are afforded the opportunity to make comments and recommendations concerning proposed plans. And there is some questions that needs to be answered that we can't answer, thank goodness we have Mr. Ron Brown here, that will lead us through that process. Therefore, this public hearing is now open. Is anyone here to vote for this? Uh, speak, excuse me. Anybody speak again? Any questions? Well, hereina, we close this portion of the public hearing on the six-year plan of FEDOC. We will now engage in a public hearing on fence end ordinance. After being duly advertised, a public hearing has been scheduled to receive public comment on the proposed fence end ordinance. Now, consider the adoption of proposed fence end law ordinance to amend the code of Appomattox County Chapter 9.1, animals by creating, varying in Article 3, animals running at large, Section 9.1, 4 of fence end law, provisions for actual punitive damages in Section 9.1.5, civil penalty for animals running at large to provide civil penalty with a string of certain livestock onto the land of another. Is there anyone here to, yes, to speak for this? Yes, sir. Gentlemen in back? Who's around here? Well, since I already done this, I'll double back. Come on, gentlemen. As each one appears, please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Greg Wagner, 84, 34, Holiday Lake Road. I just would like to say I am in support of the fence end ordinance. I heard concern earlier from a farmer, just like you mentioned this, that he was concerned about his animals that he keeps fenced in. They get out, and he automatically gets a ticket, has to go to court. And, you know, I just like to point out, in my opinion, it's not exactly like that. First off, in this ordinance, it says for someone to permit their animals to run at large, and, you know, a farmer fencing their animals in and actually get out, I think several things have to happen before they actually got a ticket. First off, there'd have to be a landowner ready to complain and call animal control. You know, and I think that's not going to happen unless that farmer is doing it on a continuous basis and not trying to keep their animals in. So I just like to mention that, and, you know, this fence end ordinance is to just protect people that don't want animals continuously on their property that is not their animals, and they should not have to put the fence up to keep other animals off the property. So just with that being said, I just want to force my support for fence end ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Janet Gollan.
Hello. I don't know how I ever got up here, but anyway, I'm Janet Gollan. I live at 932 Falling Creek Road. I'm here to speak for Joanne Jones, the president of Farm Bureau. She wrote a letter, so I'm going to read this. Dear Appomattox County Board of Supervisors, thank you for following the Appomattox County Farm Bureau to discuss the fence law and to offer a proposed solution to the ongoing program in the county dealing with a few situations of livestock regularly being out of their enclosure, causing damage and unsafe roadways. The Appomattox County Farm Bureau Board of Directors, along with the Farm, Virginia Farm Bureau staff, have been collecting and researching information on fence laws and discussing ways to address the problems without placing unnecessary burden on the majority of the responsibility livestock farmers in the county. Appomattox County Farm Bureau position is, the Appomattox County Farm Bureau Board of Directors believe fences are an initial tool for the management of the livestock, and that Appomattox County should remain a fence-out county. Appomattox County Farm Bureau has continued to research and become educated on the issue, and has come to a final proposal to the Board of Supervisors. Appomattox Farm Bureau still supports the policy mentioned earlier. Additional, Appomattox County Farm Bureau suggests that Appomattox County go out, alternate, and enforce Virginia Code 15.2-1218, Prevention of Transpassing Animals Running at Large on Highways. Furthermore, we suggest that Appomattox County inform property owners affected by loose livestock of Virginia Code Section 55-318, where no division fence has been built, and 55-319, where divisions fence already built, allowing for these property owners to have a remedy to the problem. Appomattox County Farm Bureau appreciates your consideration of this proposal and hope for an intimate in the county. Cecily, Joanne J. Jones, President. And may I say one thing? In 1957, my mother and father decided to move from Long Island, New York, to here. So that's what we did. My father bought a 145-acre farm. He does not know anything. My mother thought that if he wanted red meat from a pig, he had to have a red pig. But of course, that was not true. But of course, when we came to the farm, we saw that there were many fences that had to be fixed. And of course, my brother did a lot of it. But I also found out how hard it was after my brother went to college at tech. Then it was me that my father would say, Janet, get your old clothes on. We've got a cow out. We've got to fix the fence. But you know, it doesn't take a rock of scientists to know that you have to keep your cattle in. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt English.
Matt English, 2416 Jones Place, Appomattox, I think it, County Mountain District. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to come speak about the proposed fence end law. This law that's being proposed will have a major impact on revenue and growth in this county. Agriculture is the number-one industry in this county. This proposed law would have a ripple effect on local feed stores, building supplies, veterinary services, and many more. Also, the taxes that are generated by these groups of people, trucks, travelers, lambs, farms, buildings that goes on, with the cost of land, vehicles, equipment, building materials, climate dealing, it's hard enough to make it. And your own county is one to find you when the animals get out. This law would shut down most small animal operations and discourage anyone from starting animal farming. We proudly love to read about the FFA show team, but one of FFA programs that's been in the county. Many of those young women I coach, the livestock judging team, after a fine or two, this would shut down that program. Many of these children go on, become entrepreneurs, know livestock here in the county, do business in the county. This would impact them. The honest truth is, when you have livestock of any kind, it's going to get out. No matter how many fences there are, the weather plays a large factor in many of these cases, tree limbs, lightning, less goes on. Moving into a new area, ones you consider the neighborhood they're moving into, letting in most parts of this county, there's livestock. Throughout the county, they will get out. A person that do not know a farmer in Appomattox County, they would not pay for damages done to neighbors, property, or who would want their livestock on someone else's property? Another, Appomattox County Board of Supervisors, we're acting good faith to stop this proposal. Ninety-nine percent of farmers in this county should not be responsible for 1% of someone else's damage. Those laws and fact that you just heard about, we'll hear more about tonight, the only way we need to enforce what we have, no pretty more. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Mark Campbell.
My name is Mark Campbell. I'm District Field Services Director with Virginia Farm Bureau. I'm actually based out of Nelson County, but I'm a liaison to 10 counties in central Virginia with Appomattox being one of those 10. So the Appomattox County Farm Bureau Board of Directors asked me to share a few comments, some of what Virginia Farm Bureau policy is, as well as a recent experience of very similar to what you all had, that we had in Nelson County. So as you heard earlier, you know, Farm Bureau believes that fences are an essential management tool. But I think that, you know, there's some opportunities towards the county to use existing state code to address, you know, some of the specific individuals or habitual offenders. And that's what we had in Nelson County. We, you know, as Matt mentioned earlier, we probably had 99% of the livestock farmers that have good fences, are responsible stewards of livestock, and the resources. But in Nelson County, we did have two or three individuals that had cattle out multiple times a week, and they were looking for a solution, and there was a proposal to do the fence end. And of course, the Nelson County Farm Bureau opposed to that because they didn't want to be, have an ordinance placed that would impact all livestock farmers to address a situation with a few individuals. So one of the codes mentioned earlier, the state code 15.2-1218, actually allows the county to assess a $250 fine and a class four misdemeanor. So what that is, is it's prevention of trespassing, animals running at large on highways. Any county may prevent trespassing by persons and animals and prevent animals from running at large upon public highways, whether such highways are enclosed by a fence or not. And that's ultimately what Nelson County Board of Supervisors decided to do was to remain a fence-out county, and they were going to use that state code to address those few specific items. The other item that was mentioned in this position statement of Appomattox Farm Bureau is 55-319, and this does allow property owners, if there is a fence in disrepair, the joint property owner can give notice to the livestock farmer to repair the fence, that they're going to bring the fence up to standards and notify the owner that the fence will be repaired, and they will be responsible for 50% of the cost. So that was one option there. But again, I just refer to the Virginia Farm Bureau policy, just says, we believe fences are an essential tool for the management of livestock, and that Virginia should remain a fence-out state, with each county retaining the option to be the fence-end county. So just wanted to share those comments. Again, we just had a very similar, almost identical situation in Nelson County, and those situations had been resolved, kind of resolved on their own, actually. But again, the position of Appomattox Farm Bureau was that the county should seek options other than a fence end ordinance to address, you know, a few specific instances rather than an ordinance that would affect all livestock producers.
Mr. Campbell, I actually agree.
Oh, you and I go back a long way. The first, what you cited deals only with animals in a highway in a public right-of-way. And the second one, if the fence is in disrepair, if I heard you correctly, I can repair the fence myself, but I only get to collect 50% of the repair I do. Is that what you said? And you do know that this ordinance exempts cattle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Rodney English.
Rodney English, 2416, Dean Jones Place, Appomattox, Virginia. Thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. Watkins, are you the one that proposed this ordinance here tonight?
I think I did.
Did you? Tell us the reason, what brought it up, man, if you don't mind.
It is a public hearing, sir.
Can you bring it up now?
Yes, sir. Addressable.
But why is cattle being left out of the sheet? And I take sheep, goats, horses, equine, flock, chickens, is that what you're fencing in?
I mean, this is your time.
That's right. Okay, that's the way I feel it after I read what I got here, and I see the exception of cattle on it, and I'm not bringing down on the cattle people or anything, but I just kind of feel a little discriminated against when I see except cattle, except cattle, except cattle, three times on the back page. Now, I don't, I take what probably happened is somebody's pigs, horses, or something other than cattle got out and destroyed some property. Is that not correct? Okay, got that, all right. Now, did they not take responsibility and pay for the damages of whatever happened there on these other people's places? I take that they probably didn't, being we got here tonight with this, you know. Anyway, I think most people are very responsible with their animals. True, there's probably going to be some accidents, tree fall on it after thunderstorm, snowstorm, ice storm, or something of that nature, but I do not see that we're going to need to change this law here tonight to do that. You're going to go home down Route 24 tonight, and I'm going down Route, well, I'm going down here. You're going down 24, I'm going down 26. Right. We both going to go through a 35 mile an hour speed zone, we both going through a 45 mile an hour speed zone, and we're both going through a 55 sometime or another to go far enough down the road. Now, just because we want to get there a little bit faster, we're not going to come up here next week and hope that we will change the speed limit to suit our needs. Now, I know that we have a dog warden, an animal control person here in the county. I take that. Is that in agreement with everybody? And we have a 911 dispatcher, and I would take that this person would call the dispatcher and report animals on their property, and the animal control or deputy sheriff would go out and see, seek what's going on to remove the animal from this property, if the animal control warden is. Can I ask, did that happen? Did anybody go, just here and I'd make a statement? All right. Well, hopefully that did happen, and if it didn't, somebody's not doing a job. And if it was repeatedly happened, they really didn't do the job, and a restraining order should have been put on these people with the escaped animal, and they should not be allowed to have any more animals in this county or anything, is the way I feel about it. I feel like that you shouldn't change this law just because the squeaking wheel needs grease. I don't, I don't see it's been on that, and I feel very discriminated against that y'all would accept, would put an exception to cattle, look like it would be general livestock. would accept, would put an exception to cattle, look like it would be general livestock. I know nobody would be discriminating, Mr. Moody, you're not discriminating, or anybody like that on this matter, or any matter, y'all would be unbiased to us, so that's it. Anything else? See, I didn't mention the hunting dogs. I mean, here y'all are, it's not a lethal law in this county as far as hunting dogs, anything like that, but yet you're coming down on people who have chickens, goats, hogs, any kind of livestock like that, except the cattle. You know, that's about it. That's the way I feel. I feel, you know, that it should not be changed. It's been on the books for years, and it's, you know, something new has just happened evidently to bring it to this attention to the board here tonight. I'm for keeping it the way it is, make the owner a little more responsible, have the law enforcement be a little bit more on the spot with it. And then I think this has been several hours that y'all wouldn't have to worry over this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ray Lagner.
I suppose I read.
Oh, yes, you did.
Thank you.
Well, can't read the last name. Timothy.
Coverdale. Tim Coverdale, eight six seven, Holliday, LA. Here tonight to say I support it. We have animals. We have a small farm that we have just started to defend. We have plans for more. When we got here two years ago and moved to this county, we didn't have a fence up on the property, and the neighbor had animals that could, they were coming over, they were destroying the property. We called animal control. They came, they said, there's nothing we can do about it because of the way the law is written. Sorry. You can sue them, civilly. So we went and talked to somebody to do this. We were highly advised not to take this route until we put a fence up because we were told that the judge would ask, with current law, what did you do to protect your property, to keep their fence, you know, to keep their animals out? We have animals, we built a fence. I take one percent responsibility for them. If something happens, I will take the twenty-five dollar fine. I will go to court, and I will explain. Storm came through, tree fell on the fence, my animals got out, I'll pay for the damages. Hopefully, the twenty-five dollar fine goes away. I chose to have these animals, not my neighbor. And some people are not in a position to build a fence to keep my animals off their property, and I don't feel that it's right that that burden should be put on other people. Or fence off. All right?
Thank you. Right here. Ellen Mayberry.
Hello, Ellen Mayberry, eighty-five month, Holliday, LA. I implore, as now, the fence law to be changed. When we first started this, as neighbors of both of these people, we had one neighbor in the area with goats tearing up everything, and one with pigs tearing up everything. Animal warden called multiple times, nothing happened. The problem I see is not with the farmers. I mean, it's not with the people that are true animal husbandry people. It's the people that are just wanting to be hobbyists for some reason, that really don't think they should kick fences in. The law, the way I'm reading it, says if a person permits their animal to run at large, to me, that verbiage is very different from somebody that has a fence and is making best effort to maintain their fence. If you are permitting your animal to run at large, you're not trying to take care of a fence. So if this law is the best way to be able to control the people that have no respect for other people's property, great. If there's something else that can be done through animal warden services or whatever, look at that route. But something does need to be done to where a property owner that's going through, goat, I mean, the goat ran into my cottage and jumped on the deck, and I have a fence. I mean, and tore my electric fence after being allowed to tear neighbors' thousands of dollars of landscape, getting on his heat炕. And I think anybody here would understand, you don't want animals doing that. And the farmers here, they're not going to be letting their animals do that. We're just trying to get an ordinance to make people responsible for their animals and respectful of each other in this county. So if this is the law that it takes, then I'm behind it.
Thank you. Raymond Harris.
Thank you. Raymond Harris, nine six seven, Willow Road, Appomattox. This ordinance is a slap to the face to every farmer in Appomattox County. When the county decides to propose an ordinance, it must mean this is a countywide issue. I don't think that is the case. I think this is a few or maybe just one isolated problem now being applied to all livestock farmers. We're currently under the fence-out law, which means farmers within the county don't even have to put up fences, yet every farmer has voluntarily put up their own fence to fence in their livestock. Why would farmers spend their own money, time, and effort to build a fence that they don't have to? The answer is this. Farmers build fences to protect their own property and their crops, and they also build fences to keep their livestock on their own property. So why do we need an ordinance that states, and I quote, "whereas," in order to encourage owners to properly control and contain their livestock, unquote? Farmers don't need encouragement from the county to control and contain our livestock. No one wants the livestock to remain inside the fence more than the farmer. Animals, whether they're considered wild or domesticated, contain their own free will. Domesticated livestock are similar to children. We can teach them, we can steer them, but we can never completely control them. In other words, all fences are doomed to eventually fail. Look at the prison system with millions of dollars spent on lock sales, concrete walls, handcuffs, and lots of fences. Occasionally, prisoners still escape. Farmers are dealing with a lot smaller budget, but this ordinance wants us to be equally effective. It clearly states, upon first offense, pay for the damages, and then double damages upon every succeeding trespass. Nowhere in the United States of America do we hold people liable for double damages. If a person is at fault for an automobile accident, they're responsible for the cause of the damages. Even in criminal cases, offenders are asked to pay back restitution, not for double the amount. The ordinance allows people to prosper from the farmer's misfortune. The civil penalties are equally unfair. Farmers are forced to pay seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for a single animal getting out three days in two years. That's three days out of seven-hundred-and-thirty. That means you pay a penalty for a fence that was ninety-nine point six percent effective in keeping the livestock in. If that farmer owned a hundred head of livestock and one got out three days, the fence would have been ninety-nine point nine-nine-six percent effective, but the farmer would still pay. Furthermore, the civil penalties make the problem worse. No farmer can afford to completely replace all their fences in a single year, so they replace sections of the fence over a period of time. When unexpected problems occur, there is unexpected expenses. The seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars spent to the civil penalties is money that should be spent on the repair of the fence. I don't think the county is going to come out and fix the fence. Therefore, the money is not going towards the solution of the problem. Mother Nature has a huge role in matters pertaining to fences. We've had two hurricanes and several tornado warnings and multiple severe thunderstorm warnings in the past single year. When trees fall on fences and high water takes them down, is that the farmer's fault? You may ask, why is a cattle farmer so upset over an ordinance that doesn't pertain to him? The truth is, all legislation is a precursor to more legislation. What is going to happen in the future when, for example, a goat farmer has livestock damaged a cattle farmer's property? The goat farmer is liable for the damages, but the cattle farmer, if his livestock get out, he's not liable for damages. The ordinance says except cattle. So therefore, cattle are free to do what they want, but yet it's discriminating because what's going to happen? The goat farmer can sue the county, calling the ordinance discriminating, and it is. The county would be forced to either rewrite this ordinance or write a new one to include cattle. Then this room would be, have a whole lot more people in it. I understand people get upset when livestock on their property. When you live in a rural community, what do you expect? Deer are going to damage your car on the roadways. Everybody in here's probably hit a deer. And once in a blue moon, if you own land next to a cow pasture or any type of livestock pasture, livestock will eventually stray onto your property. The reason Appomattox is attractive to people outside of the community, as has already been stated tonight, is its rural and agricultural nature. Everybody wants to live in the country. But we don't have a rural community with ordinances like this one. We will soon be just a suburb of Lynchburg. We're not the only county without a fencing ordinance. Buckingham and Charlotte Counties, they are both geographically close to Appomattox but are also economically similar to Appomattox County. Board members, I know you wanted to protect cattle farmers when you wrote this ordinance, and I thank you. I mean that, I do, I thank you. But all farmers are better off without any ordinance, and eventually, it's going to come back and include farmers. We all know the old saying, the grass is always greener on the other side of the fence. For livestock, that is the reality. No one wants livestock inside the fence more than the farmer. Don't make us pay for not being perfect. And some of the other comments that have been made tonight, I've done a considerable amount of research on this. I know that they're talking about what Nelson County has as the class-four misdemeanor. I'm not going anywhere to get a job somewhere. I'm a farmer, been a farmer all my life, and that's what I found doing until they burned me six feet in the ground. The fact of the matter is, the majority of the people in Appomattox County are part-time farmers, and they don't want something on their criminal record saying that they have some type of criminal offense being on their record if we try to adopt some type of other ordinance than the one being proposed here tonight. Also, if we do anything along the lines of criminal, then we would have to involve our sheriff's department, which would be a cost to the county because they would have to enforce it. So I see what you're doing. I understand why you wanted to go this route, but it makes no sense to farmers, and I just hope you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Another here from Mr. Edward McCann, McCann, McCann. He couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to read. Dear Athanax County Board of Supervisors, and by the way, this was dated May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen today. I am writing to voice my concern regarding proposed amendments to our county ordinances that will create a fencing law along with punitive damages and civil penalties. I reside in the county and currently finishing my eleventh year as a health and culture teacher, education teacher at Athanax County High School. Our FFA chapter is the largest student-led organization in the county. It includes one-hundred-and-fifty-seven students, nearly one-third of the student body at our school. Under my leadership, our health and culture program has been in the national spotlight on numerous occasions. We are successful because we are able to create realistic learning experiences for our students. Our students help manage a thirty-acre working farm adjacent to the school property. During the course of the year, our students have a beef cow, swine, sheep, goats, and chickens. This teaching facility allows students to learn about animal husbandry and animal entrepreneurship. Many students take skills, learn in our program, and begin small livestock businesses of animal. The proposed ordinance puts this valuable learning experience at risk for an important demographic, the future of health and culture in Athanax County. As rich, the proposed ordinance stifles the small farmer's ability to become successful. We encourage students to begin livestock production enterprises as part of our...